Item seven, conduct a public hearing for the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year budget.
Cindy.
Okay, we can't do this in three minutes and 41 seconds.
We're doing it, Cindy.
We can't do it. Can't do it bullseye.
He says you can do it.
And we did Shark Week, so I mean.
Okay, so Cindy Arnold, our finance director, and I are going to tag team the budget presentation. And let me just say that it is our pleasure to submit for the council one of your most important responsibilities as governing body members for the community is approving the annual budget. And we're going to walk through this obviously as thoroughly, but as expeditiously as possible. And if anybody has any questions, just please stop us. Tonight's presentation is culmination of actually budgeting goes on all year round. Once council approves the budget, which tentatively could be on the 17th this month, that's when we start administering the budget council approved, but then we start preparing for the next year's budget. All that culminates in one sense that probably around December, we start putting out requests for the upcoming fiscal year. We start putting all the information together, and then the months of February and March become very important because that's when we meet with directors regarding the capital improvements as the operating budgets. And then everything is put together and then presented to the council, as it was this year in a workshop that was held on May 14th, where we dove into the actual request that came from the administration for the upcoming year. So tonight, the next slide here, just some of these are just a reminder, the council will see, they see these every year, but I think it's important because we have new residents coming in that may not know what the city's actual budget cycle is. City works on a fiscal year, which is from July 1st into June 30th. I just want to point out that while we may go quickly this evening, folks can actually watch this video, or they can go online shortly and to be able to look at the actual budget document with the executive summary itself, as well as the entire budget is on there, for them to be able to drill down and look exactly what's being proposed to be spent for FY 2025.
And there's also a hard copy at the reception desk.
Okay. So, next one is budget considerations. I always like to start with this slide because there has to be certain factors, formulas, and considerations that you look at when you're actually formulating the years, the budget. It's sometimes it's not as simple as how are revenues coming in? There's a lot of other considerations that go in to actually determining exactly what the spending plan is going to be. So the first thing I wanted to mention is the city's vision, mission, and opportunities. This is what we're looking to accomplish this year. The first one is, is that public safety services and the community well-being. You heard Aaron talk about it. The survey showed it's the number one priority of our community is they want Broken Arrow to continue to be a safe community, and it's the pebble in the pond. If you're not a safe community, the negative ripples that you'll have within your community are far-reaching. Secondly, is economic development focusing on growth and prosperity? It was the second highest in terms of responses from the public about the mixture of development that's happening, that they'd like to see, albeit at community development or economic development. So obviously, making sure you have funds available to have a good economic development administration, and to be able to go out and to seek additional businesses, especially with the tax model that we're unfortunately stuck with right now, being so heavily dependent upon sales tax. I mean, and there needs to be a strong push to make sure that we're looking at trying to grow our retail, which the council knows, we've talked about many times over this past six to eight months, is trying to actually increase the number of businesses that are here, so folks can shop local. Next is innovating municipal government operations. It really, I kind of summed this up, is how can we continue to be better? I mean, technology is great when it comes to serving the public, but really, you have to have individuals, and we have a thousand of them right now, that are out there every single day, interacting with our customers, that are representing my office as well as the city council, and they need to understand the expectations, and I'm very proud to say that I think we do a really, really good job. So how can we continue to be better to meet those expectations? And as Aaron said, eight out of every 10 folks that responded had a very strong, positive, favorable view of the quality of life within our city. The next item we take into consideration is fiscal sustainability and strategic public investments. We plan for today, but we're looking for tomorrow. And what I mean by that is, is that obviously, our responsibility is to provide the services today, but we're trying to make sure that we have the resources and a plan in place to handle the growth that's going to be coming to our community. We've talked about stormwater management plans, we've talked about sanitary sewer, long-range water plants, transportation plants. We spend a lot of time working, the council member Parks mentioned, the Wagner County initiative in order to address the planning, to make sure that there's consistency in what we're doing together, because that's where the growth is heading. And so we spend a lot of time, to do that, you've got to make sure you put money in the budget periodically, to make sure that you can do those studies, or you can add additional people where necessary. The next thing we always look at is transformational initiatives that help maintain a thriving and healthy community. I like to say this, it can't always be about asphalt and concrete. I mean, obviously, that's the most important. That's what gets people to work, to soccer practice, or baseball practice, or wherever. But you also have a thriving community, which means you have things to do, like Bullseye. Just dovetail perfectly in this, people want things to do, whether it's in your community or within your region, so you've got to make sure we budget for those. And then the last thing we spend a lot of time on is transparency and communication, and that's constantly telling a story, not a made-up story, but a story about what's happening in city halls well within the community. I think we do a really good job of that, and the council members actually parlay that with the things that they're out there doing and the other organizations work with. So I think Broken Arrow overall has a very, very well-informed community. So the purpose of the budget serves, it's the following. It's a blueprint for providing municipal services for the upcoming fiscal year. We must match available resources within the community needs, and throughout the document, it outlines the work plan and priorities for the organization. In the budget book, for those folks that are not familiar with it, there are several sections. The first is always the city manager's executive summary, which can be quite lengthy, but I do think by making it lengthy, if you read that, you can get a real good snapshot of exactly where we are in all of those areas that matter to the public. And then it matches up as they go into the various departments that they choose to do that. Next, the proposed revenues and expenditures for each fund, and as you know, we have well over 30 different funds, and that's a lot to actually manage. Proposed department expenditures, each year, the directors have to come and defend their expenditures. It's not just a guarantee that it's going to be, going to be the same as it was last year, they have to defend those expenditures. We have special funds, we propose expenditures, revenues, and all those funds need to balance. We have a street maintenance plan. Back in 2017, the new street maintenance fund went into effect, and so we're blessed to have about $5 million approximately for street maintenance, to combine with bond packages, to be able to maintain the hundreds of miles of street we're responsible for. Every year that we're looking at, our Oklahoma Water Resources Board loan program, obviously, to keep our utility system up top-notch and meeting federal and state guidelines, we actually have to borrow money periodically to be able to maintain our system and upgrade it. And then one of the last things we look at is our manual fees, is actually what we charge our citizens for those charges that whenever they utilize city services. So there are four key budgeting practices that we spend a lot of time on, is once again, focusing on long-term financial sustainability. I get concerned about where we are revenue-wise, because we're so heavily dependent upon sales tax, and it's such an elastic, such an elastic-type revenue source for the city, that can go up and down with the economy, and we've seen that the last year and a year and a half or so. And so we continue to try to work with the legislature to look at other opportunities to make sure that there's funding that is sustainable or perpetual. We spend a lot of time trying to do revenue estimates and expenditures. It's very difficult when you have such an elastic form of revenue. We need to make sure, under council's direction and by state statute, is we have to ensure all our funds balance. And then we build in contingencies for unexpected extraordinary situations that happen, and I'm pleased to say that all of our funds meet the expectation council has for fund reserve policies. So before I turn this over to Cindy for her to say a few words here, is if I would encourage anyone that's actually going to take the time to look at the budget, if they would focus on pages six through 17. That is the program of work for FY 2025. So if you go back to those five or six key areas that I mentioned earlier as the priorities, there'll be items in initiatives, programs, in those areas that match up with how we're going to continue to do those things. And so by reading those, you know, approximately 12 pages, you can get a real good flavor of the things that we plan on focusing on in the coming fiscal year. And many of those are multiple years. For example, we talked about the micro survey, we've been talking about it for three years now. The first year was actually, we needed to determine how we would do it, and last year, basically, council actually said, we're going to do it, and right now, we're in the programming, the pilot programming of it, and we'll have those results just in a few months. That council will be able to look at those results and determine, based on recommendations from the staff, exactly what should be the next step. And so some of these initiatives are multiple-year type initiatives. And with that, I'll ask Cindy to cover a few slides.
All right, FY 25 municipal budget. The sales tax breakdown on Tulsa County is 8.4, Wagner County is 9.35. As you know, we go to the store and we get 8.417 sales tax, but the city only gets 3.55, and it's broken down here by the general fund, gets 1.5%, police and fire get 0.3%, streets gets a quarter, STCI gets a half, and Tulsa County gets some. So this is where our breakdown is just, we keep this every year for people to understand a little bit. Budget challenges is inflation, cost of goods and services. We know everything is going up. I mean, it's just fact of life. And supply chain availability of operation needs is getting very hard. As you know, in the past, we've had to buy and pay for ambulances, and we're still waiting for them, or fire trucks. And we're very over-dependent on sales tax. The city manager, Mrs. Spurgeon, said, you know, it's a very, it's our number-one revenue source. The proposed FY 25, proposed municipal budget at this moment is $490 million, and it's a 38.1% increase over FY 24, which is basically is capital. As we had talked over in the budget workshop, there was a bunch of construction projects that are in different phases, but I've talked to the director of engineering and Emily that handles the OWRB, we have about $60 to $70 million ready to go out the door. Breakdown of FY 25 expenses, operational is about $175 million. Capital outlay is $275,000, which is 68% over last year, and for some of the reasons I stated. Debt service, that goes up because we take on more debt to keep the millet right. So our total is $490,455,349. The general fund is $151 million. This includes expenditures, transfers out, and ending fund balance. As we said, we meet all our reserve policies, and we do have a good fund balance, which is important. The overall increase was 138, last year's budget was 138 million, so it was increased a 9%. Basically, it's salaries increases, you know, insurance has gone up, just plain everyday operational expenses. General fund revenues, total revenues for FY 25 is $93 million. The revenue sources combined are 7.14 over last year. We project the sales tax only at 1.5% this year, because it's been kind of flat, and we've had months that it's been negative. And then the other revenues are based on historical data and current environment. One of the big things we have seen increase because of all the development and the economic development is an increase in building permits. General fund expenditures, personnel services is 16.8 million, other services 7.8, materials and supplies 1.8, or about $1.9 million. And the transfers out is $89 million, which is the police and fire, they each get a percentage of the current revenues. Total expenditures for is $115,674,000. The next big fund that we're actually going to, the sales tax capital improvement fund, this is a 0.5 of the 3.55 city sales tax. Revenue estimated this year is about 10.5 million. Basically, this is pay-as-you-go capital. This is for, you know, like dump trucks, or anything we need car-wise. We do have a million, almost $2 million reserved for debt service. And then these are some of the bigger projects. The full listing is in section four, pages eight through 14. $150,000 for the generator at Tiger Hill, $100,000 for network upgrades. One of the big expenses this year is $1.6 million for HVAC at Bass Pro. We did, as you know, we did the roofs this year. We also split between the police fund and STCI, the police cars. We took half the money, instead of hitting the $2 million for, in the police fund, for all their capital, we split it half into STCI and half in the police fund. $150,000 for the brush truck, and we need a couple of dump trucks at $650,000. And again, there's full listing in the book, section four, pages eight through 14. And then Mr. Spurgeon has touched a little bit on the street sales tax, the special revenue fund to keep our improving, constructing, and maintaining city streets and sidewalks. This fund is very important, and, you know, I think it's about $5 million we spend a year. So estimated revenue is 5.2 this year. Projects for FY 2025 is control panel replacements, which is about $438,000. Concrete panel repair, which is a little over $4 million. Two of the big projects is the Chimney Ridge and the Arrow Village. And then there's a bunch of miscellaneous projects for 575. Oops, let me go back one more second. There is a full list in the budget book in that section, and I did not notate, and I forgot which section, sorry.
Just a real quick note here, is we are working on a plan to increase the amount of funding we use for striping. We talked about the budget workshop, and waiting for Kenny Estine to come up with a recommendation with the upgraded painting, so we'll have something when I deal, make sure to get to council, but we within those dollars.
Okay. And the next fund is Broken Arrow Municipal Authority. FY 25 BAMA budget is $179 million. This includes expenditures, transfers out, any fund balance, capital outlay, and debt 24 budget was 143. It's an increase of 24.9 in operating costs, capital outlay, reserve fund, and debt service. A lot of it is the capital, is there's a lot of OWRB that is getting ready to go out the gate, which is very exciting. Right, you know, it's because of inflation, rate increase is necessary to pay for ongoing operations, planned capital improvements, and OWRB debt service. Rates had been discussed on May 14th at the, in the manual fee section. We do actually have $8.5 million this year as pay-as-you-go capital. There is a proposed additional OWRB projects that we will be going out to in probably September, October. We met the other day, and we settled exactly, there's been a couple of changes in the projects, well, that will come before you. It's still the same dollar amount, but there were some priorities that we thought was more important. So total OWRB projects, which is the Oklahoma Water Resource Board in process in FY 25, is $82, $83 million, it's going to be. And we're going to finish up some of the older ones. The expenditures, personnel services is $26 million. Other services are $20 million. Materials and supply is 7.4. Total operating is $53,814,000. And then debt service is $13,560. And that pretty stays, kind of, the way they stack the debt, it stays pretty stable, goes up and down a little bit. And then transferred out is $21,265,000. Capital highlights, this year, we're getting three additional side loaders for $1.3 million, a pallet jack, a fuel truck, which I think, you know, we definitely need, and then a 75-ton lift and a 350,000 street sweeper. In the section, which I think is section three in the bag, there's a total list of capital projects for them. Section three, 3842, I'm sorry, I didn't know what it is. Police sales tax fund, the revenues are $39 million. Expenses are $37.6 million. Currently, we have 150 sworn positions are authorized in the budget, and we have 160 filled, because the normal retirements and stuff in the department is five to seven, and we want to make sure that we have enough officers. So if we have five go out, we've got five coming up. Police sales tax, we have $1,006 in police vehicles. Body worn cameras, we have another $80,000. The auto license plate readers, $204,000. And then miscellaneous, like chasing gun rifles and guns, et cetera, is $180,000, and half their capital went into STCI for the cars. The fire sales tax fund, the revenues are $32 million. The expenses, about $31 million, and all capital is at STCI. But the new fire station number eight is currently under design, which is from the bond money, so. The general obligation bond program, we have $128.6 million in current 2011, 14, 18 geobonds projects. The proposed geobond projects for this fall will be about $21 million. In August, we will get our NAV, and that could go up. I don't expect it to go down. And that's why we've actually been able to do a 10-year program in a shorter timeframe. That's why we're working so hard on getting the new list of bonds for the next project, because we need to sell earlier. And this is just listing what we're doing for this sale this time. Proposition one is transportation, it's going to be $16,395,000. Quality of life is $3,255,000. Proposition number six is strange, it's going to be $1.3 million for a total sale of $21 million. And again, that will change based on the NAV, because we've been doing our target millet at 16.5. Full list in the book, section six, page one.
Thank you, Cindy. Just to wrap it up, I want to take this opportunity, as I mentioned at the workshop, is to thank Mrs. Arnold and Tom Cook and their team for all the hard work. I mean, council has seen the amount of time and effort that goes into putting the budget book together, and making sure that it is put together in such a way that it's really very understandable, and that if council has questions, they can easily find those, the answers to those questions. If not, we get those answers to you. Obviously, the directors that you can know from their attendance and the presentations that each year, several of them give to the council, put a lot of time and effort into preparing their budgets, and you can see they're, they get very excited about being able to come before the council and talk about what's important to them and their respective departments, and their staffs do a very good job. Cricket and Cricket Moore and Lori Hill, whatever's needed, you know, they are the individuals that help finance and help myself put everything together. And then I would be remiss if I did not thank the council for the time and effort, because it's a lot to go through, and I just appreciate you staying engaged. The Audit and Finance Committee that meets periodically is looking at where we are budgetary-wise each quarter, as well as how we're doing on audit and other financial matters, and so do the council, I believe stays very engaged in what's going on with the budget throughout the year, not just when it comes time to approve it. And so I'd like to thank you for your time and attention to this important item. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that the council has regarding the budget.
Any questions?
All right.
Oh, we do, okay. Like to open up the public hearing for the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. So we've never had anyone speak, so he just comes up, and is that right? Okay.
Thank you for having me. David Oldham here in Broken Arrow. Question I had was, I heard something about $1.6 million for Bass Pro's HVAC and Tiger Hill generator for $150,000. I was curious, and I'm hoping that we can get a, I can get a copy of the budget book, maybe before I leave or at some point, so that I can go through the budget. But I'm wondering what the city is buying private organizations their equipment, if I'm understanding that right, and I don't know if I am. So I would be interested to hear about that, just because that just doesn't seem quite right. The other question that I had was, what do you mean by community well-being? And what are we considering economic development? Some of that sounds kind of, well, I just don't know what it means. And so I would be curious to hear what those definitions are and so forth, because some of it sounds like it should be in the private sector, and so I'm curious. And then we, the other thing that was curious to me was, we have a thousand employees doing work here in the city of Broken Arrow? That's a shocking number to me. I had no idea we had that many people working. So I'm curious, now I'm curious as to what everybody's doing. So I thank you very much for your time.
Aside from me answering those questions, maybe? The city owns a Bass Pro building. As a part of the agreement that we negotiated back in the 2004 timeframe, when it opened, we have a public-private partnership, so that's actually our facility as well as the grounds, so we're responsible. They have, we have a, an agreement for the lease of that facility with Bass Pro, which requires us to do maintenance on that building, just as we would for any other city-owned facility. That's why, as Cindy mentioned, this year, we took care of the roof, and also, you know, basically, we're coming up on 20 years, and so the HVAC system needs to be replaced.
Tiger Hill we own.
Pardon me?
Tiger Hill.
Yes, that's something, our responsibility, we need a generator, we use that as a part of our emergency operations. So make sure that we have communications and are able to make sure that we keep track of what's going on, should there be a weather-related event, so. Community well-being, I mean, you can, I mean, that's just a broad frame. Parks and Recreation, for example, would be an example of community well-being, travel and tourism, trying to promote people to within our community, doing initiatives that actually, basically, special events. Those things that actually help Broken Arrow maintain that identity of a smaller community. Those are the kind of things that we hear from residents all the time, that they want to continue to see the city invest in New Orleans Square Block Party.
Yeah, attract people to our city, so we generate more sales tax revenue, so we can continue to improve infrastructure and pay for our police and fire.
Yes. Economic development, I mean, quality of life is economic development, and there's many different aspects of economic development. I mean, the most important thing we should, we try to work on, and we do that with, through our partnership with the EDC, is the creation of primary jobs. Trying to get companies that are already here to look to expand, as well as trying to get, recruit new companies when the opportunity presents itself. Secondly, is that, as I mentioned several times, because of the tax model we have within the state, we're in competition with other communities for those dollars that are available to generate sales tax. And so it's important that we're out trying to recruit new businesses, as well as trying to get the new developments to reinvest. We make public investments, and we've seen, for example, in the Rose District, what has happened when the cities made public investments, the private investment has doubled. And so economic development would be primary jobs, secondary jobs, sales tax generation, travel and tourism opportunities, sporting events. I mean, it's really just, it's not just one thing or the other. You know, if a business chooses not to locate in Broken Arrow, we've always said that we definitely would like to have them in our community. And so community development is new housing opportunities. I mean, there's just a lot that is a very robust definition.
And our, I'm sorry, our economic development, I think there's a lot of, that's, economic development is a buzzword right now, that has a negative connotation in some circles. And we do not have any partnerships for anything with the federal government to, for 15-minute cities, or any of those things, and that go along with that economic development term.
The buzzwords.
Yes. And I do, and I mean, I do want to speak up about that, because we are not on that path. We are not on that national trend pathway of becoming a part of the 15-minute city, you know, crap that's out there.
No, I, no, absolutely, absolutely not. I mean, we focus on trying to, number one, is, you know, Broken Arrow is the third-largest manufacturer in the state of Oklahoma, and so trying to, you know, what part of the EDC's responsibilities is to do business retention, going out and talking to those manufacturers to see where there may be opportunities to partner with them if they're looking to expand, or if there's, we get prospects periodically that come in that want to locate in land that we have available. The city has a commitment at the Creek 51 Business Park, I mean, we're trying to create opportunities by investing public dollars that will promote private investment. Part of my definition, and I'm not going to let economic development be co-opted into a bad term, okay? Economic development is about creating an environment that promotes private investment, because that's where you get the growth and prosperity in your community. And so that's what we really try to focus on. But at the same time, if you don't have those places to shop, they're going to go somewhere else. And I can tell you, in most cases, convenience will trump the support of your city. In other words, if you live six minutes from the Reesers in Bixby, you're not going to drive 27 minutes to the Reesers at, on Kenosha. Most people won't, Chase Elkins will, okay?
I have.
But, and maybe Christie Gillespie, and Mike maybe, but reality is, if you're not over there, you're going to go somewhere else. And so we're addressing those things to make sure that folks- And so we're addressing those things to make sure that folks keep their dollars here in the city.
Because most people don't understand how our state runs and that we're the only state that runs on sales tax.
Yes.
Well, and I think for us, I cannot, well, I'll just speak for myself. For me, it is, we are creating an environment where people can be successful and so that small business owners can be successful on their own. We're not, it's not the government taking over how they can be successful.
Yes. And we have a little over 900 full-time employees, and then we have about 100 full-time, part-time employees, which puts us just a little over, about 1,000 and nine or 10, I actually believe. If the budget gets through.
Which is under, I think, the national average for a city our size.
Well, that's fair enough. And we are a city of 115,000 too. I mean, we're growing, so you have to add.
140,000 in our three zip codes.
That's correct. So it takes more employees because our employees do a lot of work, more than what one employee would probably do in many other cities. They wear many hats, and they're very appreciated.
Bass Pro would be paid off this next year too, is that correct?
2025.
2025.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, come on down. Come on down.
First of all, thank you, council. We appreciate you. I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but I love my city. My parents came here, my mom worked at American Airlines when I was 16 years old. My parents wanted a simpler life, so I love our city. When you, Michael brought up what he brought up, it just made me think about Christine knows my heart. My husband worked at Baker Hughes 22 years. Unfortunately, he was laid off two years in his treatment, and he has leukemia, and he had kidney cancer, and then he just had a rare surgery for Cushing's disease tumor. So when I'm saying this, it's really a heartfelt issue for me, but I bet you there's others where quality of life, and I am on a very rare board. It's called the American Cancer Family Council. There's only two in the state of Oklahoma, and they invited me to be a part of that because I worked for Baker Hughes, and I was really involved in team-based management, which you all would call total quality management. What I now see in my, I had a head injury unfortunately. They had an aerosol spray that malfunctioned on the floor, and my best day became my worst day when I slipped and fell. But full circle moment, I now have a heart to help seniors with cancer. Because in our community, if you look in this room, there are more men in this room than there are women. And what we don't realize is that our men aren't looked at as much with cancer because they don't complain as much or they don't share their needs. And I see a man who is such a hard worker, who worked at Baker Hughes 22 years, sometimes in despair because he lost his job two years in a treatment. And we all know, we love Baker Hughes, and that's why I love Michael Spurgeon, because he's always looking at what can our community do better? How can we attract other businesses? And the reason I'm sharing that is because I think that we need to look at our citizens that are maybe falling through the cracks, that maybe there are some families with cancer in our local community who have served for 22 years or who have served. And if we look at that quality of life piece, I love Lisa and I love Ross because Ross has actually told me once at church, because we go to the same church, "I'd like to hear your ideas." Because that full circle moment when I fell, and here I was the secretary at the time, they don't even call secretaries anymore, but I was the secretary that was in charge of team-based management for all of our chief engineers and our chief customer service representatives, and we won the Malcolm Baldrige Award. So full circle moment, I see that if we can kind of look at our city and our citizens, and the city council can say, can we maybe look at some things where we can partner? Because the American Society Family Council wants those partnerships, and they're looking for them. And I know Kristi has said, we don't have anything in place in our community, but what if in that mini part where we have the finances, we could maybe come together with citizens that are dealing with cancer and those like the American Cancer Society? And I can share with our board maybe some things that we could work together to make a quality of life issue for our families that have served in our community. My husband worked there 22 years. So I would just like to bring that to you, to present to that, to you, to think of those ideas when you have that in your system, to say, what could we do to help with those families? And you know, maybe it's partnering the Broken Arrow Police to fix a fence for somebody. Maybe it's those connections, maybe it's not even so much money, or it's a gas card. Because what you all don't know is LLS has a $500 gas card, but it isn't funded right now. It hasn't been funded for more than a year for a family with cancer in our zip code because there's no funds. But what if we could have these communication talks to make the quality of life, which is one of the issues? So I'd like to bring that up for you guys to just mull over in the next time and maybe chat with. Thank you.
And one of the things I was going to talk about on our remarks was our Batmobile that we've been seeing all over town that just launched. And that's a great resource for that very thing to, within our city, to get to doctor's appointments and things like that. But that's, you brought up some really great points.
Yeah, and if you have a car already and you're a senior, maybe you just need a gift card so you can get your tires fixed or you can get gas in your car. And I love the bullseye, ma'am, because my friend is Lisa Bain, who has three Bernese Mountain Doggies. And I was one of the first volunteers at her home before she even had a volunteer at her first charity. I just love her heart. She came to visit my husband when he was so down. So I know that's off the record, but I appreciate you all listening.
We all love Lisa too.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? It's final time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we'll close out the public hearing.
Thank you.
I just want to say I love the input of our citizens at the public hearing because it is nice to just, no, keep on, like, just checking the boxes. This is the first time we've ever had anyone speak, and so it is refreshing.
I knew, I knew that David was going to speak. I just, I thought, I know why he's here for another item, and I thought, oh, David is definitely going to speak on the public hearing. So I'm glad you're here, David.
Well, and we appreciate the questions. There are people who don't know that we own Bass Pro and don't know we own Tiger Hill.
Yeah, that's a very good question if you didn't know, for sure.
If I can lighten David Oldham in any way, I feel better.